At this time, we will call to order the regular city council meeting for January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, please let the roll call show everyone is present this evening. And we will move on to the approval of city council minutes, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Kittle.
I'll move the minutes for a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda includes DDA board appointees David Barton and Abraham Ayub, and Housing Commission appointee Linda Benson. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to remove the, uh, item number one. The board appointees from the consent agenda, move it to new business number one, to recognize the people that actually came tonight.
Certainly.
One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
I move the, uh, consent agenda as amended.
One second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have a exciting evening here tonight, uh, in a full house for the first time in a long time. So thank you all for being here tonight. The first point of order will be a proclamation about Showerman's IGA. And I will lead with that. Whereas, small businesses have shaped our communities, embodied the entrepreneurial spirit, and become pillars of our economy. And whereas Showerman's IGA opened for business on January first, nineteen forty-one, in the former RCA building. Whereas Showerman's IGA occupied many locations in downtown South Lyon before moving to their final location at Nine Mile and Pontiac Trail. And whereas Showerman's IGA has been an important, caring part of the community, contributing to many causes and needs without hesitation. And whereas the owners of Showerman's IGA have served on the boards of the South Lyon Historical Society and the Planning Commission. And now, therefore, I, Daniel L. Pelchat, Mayor, City of South Lyon, on behalf of the city council and our entire community, offer congratulations to the Showerman's family and the Showerman's IGA for their many years of business in the South Lyon community. And at this point, um, I could ask Mr. Larry Ledbetter to come up from the Historical Society. He's got a few words to say. I'm gonna come around and give a hand and show a couple pictures as well, to show some of the historical moments from our friends at Showerman's IGA. Thank you, Larry.
I think that'll work. Is it on? Okay. Okay. Well, it's been my great pleasure to do some research about the Showerman's IGA. And, uh, with the help of some very important people, Norm Summers has provided us with some really great pictures. That's a groundbreaking ceremony. And, uh, I, I would invite you guys to correct me if I make mistakes, okay? So, uh, and, uh, there's, there's several really great pictures here. Dan's gonna run these through for you. I'm sure there's a lot of people in there that you'll recognize. I don't know everybody. This is a beautiful picture of Gordon and his two boys in the early days of the store. I love that one. That's a great picture. They were, there they are, a little bit later in life. And, uh, they're, they're celebrating still. They seem really happy there. All three of them got the big grins on their faces. I can't make out the sign. Can you guys help me with that? Whoa, nice. Okay. And then this is the second store where you were across from the, uh, from the hotel. Yeah. That's the second store. Uh, they actually had four stores in, in South Lyon. We do have a picture of the first store. That'll be coming up. Oh, this is the whole crew. This is the whole fam. They're all together. Yeah, that's really great right there. All of these, oh, there's, there's the first store in the background, in fact. And, uh, 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 all, all the, the family worked in this store at some time, so. Uh, this is store number three, which is when I came to town. It's, it's now the, uh, uh, post office. But, uh, Norm Summers had the, the drugstore on the corner, and, uh, Showerman's is right here. That was, that was a great store. I loved it. I loved that store, guys. Oh, I don't remember that, but, uh, I, that was one of the pictures Norm gave me. I guess you guys did, did some delivery work, huh?
Yeah, we were in parade.
Ah, in the parade. Ah, great, great. Uh, now, this is, uh, store number four, and you guys broke ground to build that store completely. Yeah, that's, that is a brand-new store. It's been, uh, Farmer Jack's, and it's now Bush's Market. But, uh, they built it. They built that store. I think there was one or two more pictures. Norm shared one picture that I really want you to see. That's, it's, uh, it's a fun picture because it showed, uh, that Mike wasn't always a, uh, real, uh, serious guy. He had a little fun once in a while. I mean, Steve. Steve. It was Steve. That was Steve. It was, nah, I'm sorry about that. Oh, okay. You don't have that one? Oh, okay. Uh, it, Norm, Norm had a, a pet name for you, Silly Steve. You were, you were, you were giving him this. Yeah, they got you on film. So anyway, I don't get to show it to you, but I can, I can act it out. Okay, I've got some stories that I, that I picked up, uh, from the different people. But I'd like to start out with the one from myself and my wife. When we first got into the Cub Scout business, we were, uh, had a campout every year at, uh, Camp Dearborn. And you guys took care of us. You, you gave us really good deals on the food, and we had a wonderful time. And I think I remember that your son had so much fun that he said, "I don't ever wanna go home, Dad." Did he say that? Yeah, I remembered that. That's a long time ago. We were camping and cooking and, and, uh, we were fishing and swimming and playing games, and it was just a fabulous time. So, those were the early days. Now, I got a story from Sandy Stewart that when Jim and Sandy first moved to South Lyon, that they were building a house west of town. And Jim went up to the market to get some food, and he got his big basket of food, and he, he gets to the checkout, and he's got no money. And they said, "Don't worry about it. Pay us when you come back." And that right there is a great example of the way Showerman's Market treated people. Trust is a very important gift. Okay, now Pete Nijewski, Nijewski, I have a hard time with that name, offered these thoughts. He says, "I think that Steve is the grocery packing king. He took great pride in the way he packed your groceries. He once told me that he really enjoyed packing groceries." And he, he trained all of the packers to pack that way. You never got home and found your bread at the bottom of the bag with canned goods on top of it, and you never found your potato chips smashed in between the cereal boxes. And Showerman's gave countless numbers of high school students their first jobs. They showed them, uh, examples of how customers should be treated with respect. And when every group of this, of the school needed a place for a car wash to raise money, the Showerman's provided space for it and furnished the hoes, hoses and the water. They also supported band and theater productions by purchasing ads in the programs. Pete said, "I never saw a high school yearbook with a page congratulating graduates" with, when the children, when his children were there. And he said, "Thank you, Steve and the Showerman's family, for all the help and support you have to give the South Lyon and surrounding area." So these are just a few examples of the great things that I've heard about the Showerman family and I've experienced. So, uh, with, it's my great pleasure to present you with this P to the city, and you guys will just have to share it.
Thank you, Larry, for all your helping out with all that. Thank you. And thank you to the Showerman family and everyone for coming out tonight. All right, with that, we will open up the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and please remember our two-minute time limit, please. All right, with that, we'll close our floor for public comment. And we'll move on to the discussion of downtown tonight with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. It's gonna be a tough act to follow, but see what I can do. So last week, myself and four DDA board members went to Farmington and did a walking tour of downtown Farmington Social District. We asked them, you know, questions about their social district. The reason we did this was because it was brought up at the DDA board meeting, a proposal for downtown South Lyon. We spoke with a couple of business owners that participated with, or that are participating in the social district, asked them what the impact has been on them, got some of their feedback, and then kind of learned, um, you know, what Farmington had found with their social district. I believe they were the second one in Oakland County to have one. So, they were gracious enough to host us, and, um, it was, it was nice to see, to see that, to experience it, and to be able to have that sort of access to, to those folks. Uh, we continue to plan for Carnival on March fourth. Uh, the event is gonna be similar to last year. However, we are planning on closing some streets, streets for the event this time. Uh, there was a lot of people downtown and, uh, last year, and we want to try and avoid any, uh, safety issues that might arise from, hopefully, a lot of people being downtown again for the event this year. Uh, we have another winter market again this Saturday. Um, it is the twenty-eighth, I believe, from ten to two. That's at the VFW Hall. Once again, uh, that's been going great, so that's, that's good to see. Uh, we have our, uh, first downtown and business, downtown business and property owner meeting of the year this coming Thursday at eight-thirty at Corner Social as well. Um, I'll be getting, hopefully, some feedback from our downtown business and property owners on the social district, uh, at the meeting as well. So, that's it for me. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am, I love the idea of the social district, but I thought that there was, maybe this is for Paul, I'm not sure, but I thought there was some reason that we couldn't do it, some kind of, uh, not ordinance, but there was some reason that we didn't have enough of something. I remember us discussing a, a social district a while ago, and it was shut down for some reason.
Um, I'm not sure. Um, I know, so you have to have, the way it works is there's the social district, so let's say it's the, the DDA district. We'll just do like an overlay district. And then there are commons areas within the social district where people can take their alcoholic beverage and consume it there. In order to have the commons area be established, you have to have two licensed establishments, which are bars, restaurants, microbreweries, you know, people that can serve alcohol, touching that commons area within the social district. And so, we do have that number, those number of businesses that we could potentially, um, work to get a commons area established so that we can abide by the state law. Uh, but I'm, I'm kind of trying to figure out the best way to do that so that we can have it be the most effective and beneficial for folks.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Have you had, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you had any communications with the, um, individuals or the DDA up in Holly?
Um, I know the DDA director in Holly, but I have not had...
They have a great social district.
Okay, I can reach out to...
I mean, I was actually at it. Very, very, very nice, you know, landscape with lights. And, um, I do believe they ordered special seating, uh, for that area. They, they really, really did it nice. Uh, they closed off a part of their, uh, roadway. It's between two businesses. That's kind of how they did theirs, but it's very, very nice, very, very nice, so.
Yeah, I can reach out to, to Holly and see.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bojor, go ahead, and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Dill.
I seem to recall talking about that social district with you and Paul. Excuse me, that one time, that it can't be in connection or whatever with a, with a downtown event. Does that still hold true?
So that was the case. However, they changed the law, like, early last year, or maybe at some point last year, they changed it. So you don't have to close your social district if there's a special event happening.
So for, say, for instance, Pumpkin Fest, we could, if we have a district set up, that could be going on at the same time?
My understanding is yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not certain on that, but my understanding is yes.
Something to look into.
Yeah, for sure.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Forgot this part. Um, so when you visited with Farmington and the businesses there, did they feel that the social district was beneficial to everyone?
Yes, they said it was, I mean, we went to, um, one of the places we went to was a brewery. And for them, they said it was very beneficial because they're able to have greater turnover. They just pour a beer, people walk out of the store, and, you know, they're on their way. Um, they said they had, they saw a lot of increased traffic with special events happening. So people, you know, wanting to get a beer and then go walk around at the, at the event as it was going on, they said that was very beneficial. And, yeah, they, they haven't had really any issues. The only thing that they cited was a little bit more trash downtown, which they hired somebody to help clean up trash to offset that, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kittle.
Is there district right on Grand River Corridor?
Yep.
It is, and there's not a, a concern about pedestrian traffic mingling with the traffic of the street?
No, they seem...
Setback or something, or darted some way?
No, they're good. I mean, they...
Yeah, good.
They just have it throughout, you know, pretty much their entire downtown, and it works for them, so.
I like the idea of that, yeah. I mean, obviously, there, there is some risk involved, but, um, it'd be nice to end up being responsible, being able to do something like that.
Councilmember Kennedy, you had something?
So Nate, last year, you talked about partnering with the DDA director in Wixom. Have you done anything on that? Has it moved anywhere? You have something lined up for this year?
Uh, we have not continued our discussions yet on that. Um, that's something that we should probably pick up again because we talked about doing something this fall, as far as coordinating on an event together, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything for Nate tonight? All right, thanks for the update, Nate.
Thanks.
Onto the fire chief report. Chief Thorington?
Good evening. So the fire department started a pretty busy year so far. We're eighty-one calls, um, up to this council meeting. Our crews are, actually eighty-two. We just had another one. I put my page through off. As far as the new ladder truck goes, I talked to the rep today at three o'clock, and it is in process of being worked on. Um, they're taking their time so that it comes back as a new truck. This is their word. So it comes back as a new truck and not a repaired truck. They're picking up the parts, and they're putting on brand-new parts. So it's taking longer than what they initially anticipated, of course. So he said, "Depending on how he talks to at the plant, it's anywhere between the end of January, early, I'm sorry, end of February, early March, before this truck comes." So, he said it will be like brand-new, it'll be, you all tested, probably a hundred yards, but it is definitely a slow process. It's disappointing. Seems like we should already have this truck in service, but that's kind of where it's at. Uh, this afternoon, we did have a senior living condo, uh, strip of units on, uh, Franklin Terrace. We ended up shutting the entire place down. They had, uh, CO leaks, CO, high-level CO and combustible gases from their boiler. Uh, it's a common boiler for the entire complex, so six to seven residences. They're out of the building now. Um, the management company's putting them up until Wednesday, and they're gonna sell a new boiler, uh, starting tomorrow, take a couple days, so. That's kind of what I've got. Any questions?
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Was that, um, was that recognized by, uh, CO, uh, alarm going off, or...
Actually, the alarm was going off last night. Uh, it was a, a lady, she turned it off because it was beeping, and she wasn't sure. This morning, she woke up, fortunately, felt real sick, and called for ambulance and, and us. We arrived, didn't, something didn't seem right. You kind of smell an odor, probably from the combustible gases, but you can't smell CO. So we got our detector out, and realized it was high levels of both. So she was very fortunate. Yeah, how, the residence right to the left of that one also had very high levels of CO. So we were fortunate there was no serious situation that kind of came out of that worse.
That's good fortune, yeah.
For sure.
Man, anyone else got anything for chief?
On that note, we are installing, uh, CO detectors and smoke detectors for free for residents. Just takes a phone call to the station. We'll, we'll set them up. We'll come out and install them, uh, free of charge, so.
That's a great reminder. Thanks, chief.
Good advertising for it, yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah, for sure. If it's beeping, call us. Don't take the batteries out.
Absolutely. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right, now, we'll move on to the police chief report, and Chief Baki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. So, uh, as you can see, I brought along a lot of the members of the department that I'm gonna be introducing, uh, you to tonight. Why don't we all come on down, and if you can just start lining up that way, Lisa, if you can go to the end right there. Come on down, and we're gonna start with our newest members and some promotions, and then as well as Officer of the Year. By the way, uh, I'm so happy to see the Showermans here. Uh, I grew up with Ann, went to school with her, and I thought it was great that, uh, they were able to get that award. That's pretty awesome. So as you know, that, uh, after Chief Solvik had, uh, had retired, we had a succession plan in place, and we're constantly trying to, um, ensure that we have enough personnel to, uh, serve the needs of, of our department. So without further ado, I'd like to first, uh, introduce our, our newest administrative assistant, Lisa Werner. Uh, she's, she came to us, uh, early, um, July eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two. Her current duties are, uh, she does all lean paperwork. Um, she is our Lean TAC, which is a terminal agency coordinator. Um, she's, uh, also in charge of FOIA's. Uh, she does discoveries for us. She answers all the phones, um, when she's working. She does gun permits. She, uh, enters warrants. Um, and she also helps out with parades. So she does step up, and she does crossing guard, uh, duty for, for us as well for the parades when we need, when we need the extra bodies there. Um, she's also a board member of LRM, which is the Law Enforcement Records Management Association, and is chairperson for, uh, certification for clerk, which is a certified law enforcement records professional. She's gonna be going to training, uh, for that school. And hopefully, when she completes it, uh, we will be one of the first, uh, in the, uh, in the state of Michigan to have that certification on one of our administrative assistants. So, Lisa Werner, everybody. Next, I want to talk about, uh, introduce Ashley, Officer Ashley Takorsky. She is our first, um, officer that the police department has ever sponsored. Uh, she was, started as cadet with us, uh, in February of last year. Quickly, uh, showed an aptitude and wanted to be a police officer. She expressed to me that one of her dreams was to become a police officer. So after speaking with her and after speaking with Paul, um, we seen the need that we're gonna need another qualified person to fill the, uh, the role of police officer after Chief Solvik retires in, uh, in November. Um, so discussion with Paul, it was agreed to, to sponsor her to go to, uh, the police academy. She did graduate the academy, um, uh, in November tenth, and was sworn in November sixteenth, and her first day as a police officer was November eighteenth of last year. Um, so we're excited to have her on the team. She does really good. She's got, uh, I think, one more or half a month left of your, of your FTO. So she's currently in the FTO program. Um, and she should be done with it in another two weeks, we think? Are, are you doing good? Okay, that's good. Thank goodness. So she's doing really well, doing a great job. I've been hearing reports that everything's, uh, up to par, and we're really happy to have her. Next, I want to introduce, uh, Officer Joe, uh, Joseph Chopski. So Officer Chopski was hired in two thousand and twenty. I wasn't, I was unable to introduce, or we were unable to do some because of COVID. So I wanted to bring him tonight just to, uh, show him that we did, uh, that we're continuing with filling new positions as they come up. Um, he comes from Burton, uh, which is by Flint. He had ten, five years' experience. Um, and he also was a field training officer there, was trained for it. So we are utilizing him as a field training officer right now for, and he had also taught Ashley. Um, he also is an evidence tech for us. He volunteered to go to that school, which is a two-week class, um, in, uh, the art of collecting evidence and fingerprints and taking pictures. So it's imperative that we have that type of, uh, of expertise at our department. He does a great job with that. He also, and we call this, I call it, he's also, uh, in charge of our, um, our traffic safety division. He's the guy that goes out and deploys our speed signs, um, and then collects all the data from. So I, uh, he's, he stepped up to that challenge. I asked if anybody wanted to be in charge of that, to keep all the records, to download that information. But that is important for us because we're able to see what is going on in the areas that we're getting complaints on speeders or traffic infractions. Um, we're, we're able to pull that data from those machines, which is, uh, was valuable for us, so we appreciate that. He stepped up and volunteered and wanted to do that, so thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. And next, I want to introduce, um, our Officer of the Year. And I received this memo from, uh, Lieutenant Seerlin, so I'm just gonna read it verbatim. It's a great memo. It's, uh, Chris Faught, Sergeant Chris Faught, who does an excellent job for us. He's one of those guys I like to call Swiss Army knife. He'll do anything for you. He'll get the job done, uh, no issues whatsoever, so. This is the memo I received from Lieutenant Seerlin. Sergeant Chris Faught has been nominated to receive the Officer of the Year Award for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the award can, the awards committee has consulted with each other and could not agree more that Sergeant Faught's, uh, Sergeant Faught's nomination. Sergeant Faught is a twenty-two-year-old veteran for the South Lyon Police Department and is currently assigned to the patrol division as a supervisor. His work ethic is impeccable, and he does an outstanding job as a sergeant. During two thousand and twenty-two, Sergeant Faught was always willing to help all department personnel with the department administrative assistant in early, when, when the, with the departure of the administrative assistant in early two thousand and twenty-two, Sergeant Faught took on the clerical duties whilst supervising his road patrol officers. Needless to say, this task was extremely time-consuming and stressful. Sergeant Faught also assisted with the accreditation process and supervised in the field training program. He has a great attitude and is readily available to work when needed, uh, outside normal scheduled hours. Sergeant Faught has, uh, been selected to take on the department's accreditation program in two thousand and twenty-three, after the promotion of Lieutenant Seerlin, uh, who is the current accreditation manager. Uh, he is a dedicated employee and exemplifies what is, what it means to be a team player. Sergeant Faught's, uh, commitment to the city is evident, and his dedication to the department's mission is exemplary. We are proud to have him as a member of our team and, uh, that he received the twenty, twenty-two Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations. So, on to promotions. So Officer John Schneel, uh, Schneeman, uh, is going to be promoted tonight, to sergeant tonight. Uh, he, uh, hired on, on October twenty-sixth of two thousand and eighteen, during which time, um, he, uh, did a number of things for the department. One of the things that is, that he volunteered and stepped up to be our defensive, one of our defensive tactics instructors, which is imperative we have these type of... our defensive tactics instructors, which is imperative we have these type of instructors in order for us to defend ourselves as well as doing it in a legal way, in a safe way. He also stepped up to be a member of the Mobile Field Force. That is a conglomerate of officers from area departments that are used to meet the threat of civil unrest or any type of disorder of that size. So he stepped up to the plate and volunteered to do that. That's, that type of training, you've got to march, you've got to run, you've got to be physically fit. John does a great job for us on that, representing our department. He also is a, is also a lean tech in Lasso, which is the local agency security officer. That's for lean. So we ensure that all of our lean machines are all up to date, that we're following policies for lean and we maintain security of our, of all of our computers, which is also essential that that happens. So he did, he tested for sergeant June of 2021, and he made the list. And again, part of our succession plan is that moving forward, now we're time to fill up another sergeant position. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Sergeant John Schneeman. Congratulations. Last but not least. So officially, we have Lieutenant Seidelin. He was promoted when I was promoted December 1st. But I felt that it's necessary to have him here, to introduce him to you all tonight. And his mother Judith wishes to pin his badge on him. So a little bit about Chris. So a little bit about Chris, and I can't be happier with him being at his position right now. When, when speaking, again, when we talk about succession and how this looks, this is what it is, right? So now I'm doing things to help him, move him up as an organization, to ensure that there is continuity of administration and management when it comes to doing these things. So it's very important. He came to our department in 1994 as a part-timer. And then he graduated or got hired or promoted to full-time in January of 95. During that time, he actually got the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award three, three years in a row, 96 to 98. So it shows his commitment to safety while keeping potential hazardous drivers off the road, which is great. He was promoted to sergeant July 2014. And during those, during that time, he overseen our detective bureau. He was in charge of all of our scheduling for our staff, our staff scheduling, simunitions instructor, he was the Milak accreditation, he's in charge of vehicle maintenance, and he, at that time, was a TASER and chemical agent instructor. Right now, he oversees the day-to-day operations of the department. And so he has a lot of responsibility. He's, he stepped up to the plate, no problems, very easy. He's one of those guys that, that attention to detail. And this is where he was so great at the accreditation manager, okay? He saw the little things that were required to have this, this process complete, and he did it immensely awesome. He was really good. So with further, without further ado, I'd like to present Lieutenant Chris Seidelin. That, that pin is this long.
Can you two look this way?
Oh. We do? Thank you. Thank you. So. So in, in closing, this is the succession plan, and this is what it looks like, okay? It is to ensure that the proper personnel are in place in order to continue with normal operations with no lack of service to the public. The plan is never-ending. We encourage members of our department to continue their training and education in order to advance into their, into leadership roles. It is imperative that we continue recruiting officers in order to face the challenges in the future. We recognize that we are in a transition period when it comes to personnel and understand that new officers need to be brought up in a culture of professionalism. As experienced members of the department retire, it is essential that we recruit well-rounded, disciplined individuals who are capable of meeting the highest of law enforcement standards. In closing, I want to thank council for allowing me to introduce the newest members and leaders of the South Line Police Department, who are committed to the mission of safeguarding our community. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you for all. Congratulations, buddy. Awesome job, Chris. Awesome job, buddy. Ashley, good to see you again. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard, yeah, you're back. Take care. Oh, good to see you too. Yeah, great job. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, I'd like to say something. I'd like to, to recognize what a bounty of talent we have in this community. Be able to have people like that exceed themselves. We're really a very fortunate community.
I couldn't agree with you more, Councilmember Kibble.
Mr. Mayor, I might ask that Councilmember Kibble can repeat his statement.
Would you mind repeating that, Councilmember Kibble?
No, no problem. I, I was just saying that how, what a wonderful thing it is for this community to the, to enjoy the bounty of the talent that we have in our police department. What they, what they do, how they do it is just right on the money. What a, what a wonderful institution they've, they've set up there, so. I'm very proud of this community as a product of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble, that's a great comment. All right, we've had a lot of fun so far. We're going to try and get into some, some business here. We'll do unfinished business first, the, the ARPA recommendations, and then we will move on to new business after that, and we'll take care of some of the things we moved around earlier. So Patricia, feel free to come on up.
Yeah, I'll start it off.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Based upon the presence of so many public safety officers here tonight, I want to thank city council and all of you in attendance here tonight for being at one of the safest locations in the state. But I'll get into the ARPA funds, which I know what everybody is here for. In October and November, we discussed a $1.2 million in ARPA funds that the city of South Line will receive in as part of the American Rescue Act. The state and local fiscal recovery funds, the final rules issued in 2022 outline the eligibility guidelines. The treasury has clarified that permitted uses include renovations to government facilities, infrastructure repairs, and equipment to facilities and improve government services. Such equipment could be road, road building and maintenance, water and sewer services, trailways, and equipment. The goal is to fund investment that serve the needs of the community or assist the municipality in providing those particular needs. The funding would be recognized as revenue through this fiscal year, moved out as unearned revenue and available for use immediately. We discussed this with Plant and Moran, and the auditors worked with multiple communities that have elected this option with their, with the use of these particular funds. Since our last discussion, city council members have given their input on potential uses for the funds. I've also met with department heads to see if there are any potential uses for funds within their department. And city council members provided the input as items that they would like to be, see considered. Some of the suggested uses by department heads were for equipment or vehicles or potential other uses within their facilities. I've compiled a list of recommended items and provided that to you for city councils of what staff provided with their approximate causes, costs, and which department they are associated with. At tonight's meeting, I'm looking to narrow down the list of potential uses. It's important to know that we don't have to rush to spend the money. The funds are to be allocated by December 2024 and spent by December 2026. Myself and Patricia are here to answer any questions regarding this, but I would suggest as far as outlining some particular items that you want us to look further into, and we will continue to move forward to use these in a proper way that the public and all of you see fit.
Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
I'd, I'd be happy to start off. I, a few of these items that I'd actually suggested included the farmer's market structure as well as solar charging stations. I'd suggest, as far as these suggestions that I've made, maybe making them dual-use options so that during the farmer's market, they could be utilized as farmer's market structure, and then also when not a farmer's market, they could be utilized as parking slash charging station structures. So then we get, you know, twice the usage versus just single usage. Figured I would at least mention that to get more bang for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still think that, and I know, I know we talked about this before, but I think that I'd like to see the money used for things that are very noticeable to the public. And I know that some of these things are extremely important for a lot of the departments, but I can also see some of those things easily worked into our regular budget. I would personally love to see anything, you know, any of these things that have to do with parks, trails, you know, social district facade improvements, things that we can say, we got this money and this is what we're doing to improve South Line and it's, and it's visible. So that's, if we're narrowing things down, I would much rather see something like that than some of the things that I think we can work into the budget otherwise.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Actually, Paul and I talked about this earlier today. The two in particular, it's a follow-on to Councilmember Dilg's comment. The two in particular that I'm interested in are the bridge replacements renovations. That one bridge that runs behind the wastewater treatment plant, if that isn't repaired, isn't replaced, basically it disrupts the continuity of the trail from McCatty Park down to Volunteer Park. I mean, so basically you lose the availability and use of that asset if we don't do something with that. Same thing over on the other side, replacing the one that has already failed over at Oak Creek. The people down in that quadrant of the city don't have access, convenient access to the trail, to be able to use that asset throughout the city. So again, these are, these are more major purchases that we typically would not have that kind of money available on an annual basis to address those types of issues. A lot of the other things here are basically smaller purchase items that we would easily work into, in most cases, the annual budget. So again, I'd like to focus on some of the higher-ticket items and some that have impact to other areas within the city, especially with the trail system throughout the city.
Councilmember Hanson, I'll come back to you just to make sure that Councilmember Kibble or Councilmember Mosier or Councilmember Kurzweil has nothing. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead, and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit interested in, only because I had a wonderful opportunity to chat with Doug at Christmas time. That was when cookies were coming around. And I'm kind of interested in security upgrades that could go toward the water and sewer. I think we live in a very different world than we did 50 years ago, and I think the reality is setting in that right when you think you're okay, you're not. And I think it would be wise for us to unfortunately anticipate some issues without going through anything here tonight. But I would like to see those security upgrades at the water department. I think additionally, if we are going to have a pretty active downtown, I would like to see that farmer's market get developed, 400,000. And the reason I'm saying that is I understand the competition that's moving into the area. There's going to be a farmer's market up at Blake's. That structure up there is, that development is going to have, it's my understanding, a farmer's market. When that huge farmer's market gets built over in Northville, I mean, that's, that's another farmer's market, it's going to have all the bells and whistles on it. And I think we need to understand that farmer markets are, are competitive venue. And I think if we could put some money towards the farmer market, I would like to see that. And I would like to, and this is just something that I've been working on for a couple of years, I, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask your permission, may I ask a question of the city clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question goes to the clerk. I see election equipment for 25,000. What exactly would that be for?
It would be another calculator, another test writer, because we're going to have an early, nine days early voting.
Okay, okay, then I would definitely put my hat in for the 25,000 on the election equipment. Is there any way that this equipment that you are requesting, would that assist you in not taking absentee ballots up to Pontiac or?
It depends if more people decided to vote in person as opposed to spending, as opposed to an absentee ballot. So it's very possible.
Well, I think absentee ballot is the way. I mean, I think that's kind of where it's going, whether, you can argue all you want, but the statistics kind of show that that's where it's at. I'm not in favor of our absentee ballots going up to Pontiac. That's because you have other individuals making determinations on those absentee ballots if there's a question. I would like those issues resolved here in our city where we have our voters. That's just my personal slant. So if this includes inability to move those absentee ballots here back into the city, I would like to see that.
That may actually cause me to purchase an additional calculator, because the county board, they're sequestered in the room the entire day. So that's a whole new machine that I would have to purchase to keep those here. And I would also have two higher personal calculators just for the county board.
But it keeps our ballots in our community. Okay, all right, so that's kind of where I'm at, security, election, and the farmer's market. I think farmer's market is critical. I, I don't think we can sit back on that farmer's market. I think in the next couple of years, we'll regret it if we don't do something fairly soon. But that's just me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Either of you guys have anything? Okay, Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
Well, it's kind of been touched on a little bit before, but this sort of money was basically money that we would never expect to have, you know, at all in the future. So we need to definitely kind of think of, you know, ti, high-ticket items that will actually have a big benefit in the community and, and be visible. And will be something that we would never dream of actually spending money on. So I definitely want to, you know, advocate for exactly what Mr. Kennedy was showcasing, the Oak Creek Bridge. That is a, an artery that is basically connecting the trails from Nine Mile all the way up to, you know, the, the parks that we just invested money on for pickleball courts and such. I mean, goodness gracious. So to, to put that money towards that sort of reconstruction and repair, as well as towards improving the farmer's market into a permanent structure, possibly permanent structure with parking and, and charging stations, et cetera. Councilmember, Councilmember Dilg showcased the fact that, you know, utilizing this money so that it puts us on the map, adding charging stations puts us on the map. It will actually showcase the feasibility of the city to be able to charge vehicles that are coming to visit. And that will put us on every app for these electric vehicles that are rolling out the assembly lines now. So, thank you.
Just a couple of two cents, I can get behind all of that. I think my exact analogy I was kind of thinking about after being, going through all of this was, let's try and get the community a big shiny red ball that they all know where this money went to. So with the, with the trails being on there, you know, and forgive me, I may be speaking out of line here, I don't know, but it seems to me like we probably didn't start a nest egg for replacing those. but it seems to me like we probably didn't start a nest egg for replacing those bridges when we first implemented the system. So if we do go that route, perhaps it'll buy us enough time to put enough money away for, you know, 25, you know, ideally, as long as we can keep them in good shape, you know, we could have a game plan to replace that. Because I think one of the things that's sticking in my head that I've seen in my years of working in technology is you get caught up in a great idea, let's say it's Wi-Fi or something, and five or six, maybe seven years down the road, that type of hardware and physical stuff has to be replaced. Where, I like where our heads are at on this so far. These seem like big, big-ticket items, big, long time to come up with a game plan to replace them. So the community isn't just like, oh, that was nice having that for 20 years, now we're just not going to be able to fix it. So I think it's been a very constructive conversation. I know we're all going to continue thinking about it. It's something I think about on a daily basis if I come across a good idea. So I didn't know if anyone else had anything to add. We do have Patricia here, if anyone's got any questions. But I think, I think we might be ready to move on here.
I think, Mr. Mayor, based upon your comments, we'll narrow down that list, get better guessments together, and provide you an updated list that we can have further discussions on that in the future.
Well, and it looks like it's kind of lining up with, we'll be talking budget season anyways, so it'll fit right in there with that. So, okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
So we'll move on from unfinished business this evening, and we did have our DDA board appointees, Mr. David Barton and Mr. Abraham Ayoub, who are in the building. I don't know if you guys wanted to come down here for new business number one, where we moved that to briefly. You don't, don't feel like you have to, we just wanted to recognize you guys since you were here. I would just, you know, on behalf of all of us, we just wanted to thank you guys for, for getting involved and being on the team, so.
Yeah, thanks. I just, thank you for the opportunity and the appointment, and I look forward to contributing.
All right, great.
Looking forward to it. It's just going to be, it's going to be nice, it's going to be fun.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Oh, is, is Ms. Linda Benson in the crowd tonight too? Would you mind just coming down for a second? Thank you. Linda will be joining the Housing Commission appointee, and if you had anything to say, feel free.
I want to thank you for the opportunity. I love South Lion, I want to see it grow and just help everyone, senior citizens, those yuppies. And we have to please them, so I'm looking forward to working with all of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I caught myself smiling. I told myself I'm not allowed to do that anymore. Okay, thank you for all of that. Thank you all for being here tonight, too. So we'll move on to new business. It was originally number one, it's number two now. Gatsby 7475.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we will need to make the motion to make point those members.
Oh, do we?
Yes.
Sorry, they're usually in the.
We want to make sure that they can start, they're very excited.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we just need to do the DDA board.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve David Barton and Abraham Ayoub to the Downtown Development Authority.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us with a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, because that stayed in the consent agenda. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Patricia.
Yep, no problem. So tonight we're going to be discussing Gatsby 7475 actuarially, actuarial, I can never say that word, every year it gets me, valuation for our fiscal year that ended 6/30/2022. So the city of South Lion had engaged the Howard E. Nyheart Company to collect our data and prepare a comprehensive actuarial valuation report based upon the requirements of Gatsby 7475 for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Some of the highlights that you received, page 31 of the valuation includes our PA 202 Uniform Assumptions Disclosure. Those must be filed with the state of Michigan each year by the end of the calendar year, which happens to be six months after the close of our fiscal year. So that has been done and accepted by the state. We also receive a new entrant normal cost exhibit for employees hired after July 30th, 2018. That is when we changed also our OPEB and the coverage with our pension. But that essentially gives us our cost for each new employee hired after that date. And then also the valuation gives us the actuarially determined contribution, or the ADC, for our upcoming fiscal year, the one we're in now, 2223, which was evaluated at $63,467. Now, what has been approved in our budget, when we went through the budgeting process last year for our current fiscal year, was that we would use the ADC as well as the normal cost to, up to $70,000 towards budgeting as a minimum, but we would also go up to 72. So what we ended up doing is a $72,000 contribution. So what I'm trying to say is I'm scrambled here. But, so, so we are, the ADC did come in with the normal cost a little bit below the $72,000, but we did have the funds in our budget, so I went ahead and did make the $72,000, which I know in the past council has appreciated that we, if we can put more towards the pension and the OPEB costs that we do. So this was for the MERS Retiree Health Funding Vehicle that we opened in 2020. So essentially we're in our third year of that trust, which will help cover our costs, our current costs and future costs of our employees. So I have invited Spencer Towah, who speaks much more eloquently than me, from Plant Moran to come tonight to answer any questions about the valuation that I may not be able to answer. Now, again, this was done by a third agency, Nyheart, but Spencer and his crew over at Plant Moran used that data to implement towards our financial statements that we had for fiscal year ending 6/30/2022. So he's well-versed in them, if you have any questions that I may not be able to answer. You're just so wowed by the data.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate, thank you Spencer for coming.
Thanks for driving out.
Thanks, Spencer. All right, with that, we'll move on to new business number three. Fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendments.
Yes. So tonight I am presenting to you some budget amendments for a few of our funds. So we're totaling $8,000 for the general fund expenditures, $3,300 for DDA fund expenditures, $27,321 for the drug forfeiture fund expenditures, $26,175,000 for the water and sewer fund expenditures, and $29,829 for equipment replacement fund expenditures. I have included a detailed listing of what was needed and why we had to do those, where I'm requesting that we make these amendments. Most of these items were presented to you at earlier council meetings with agenda notes and were approved. So they aren't the first time that they've been presented to you. A couple of them are new, such as the water and sewer fund expenditures for the cellular readings. Those were something that has come up as we, you know, keep upgrading our technology with the meter heads. We realized that we needed to budget additional funds for those cellular services to read the meter. So that was a new, something that came up since we've approved the budget. But if anyone had any questions about the specific items, we'd be happy to answer those tonight.
Councilmember Kurzwell, go ahead.
I thought we had cellular readers. I thought that was already incorporated in the budget.
We do, this was additional funds that we need for the service, for the actual reading of the service for our cellular company. Their rates had gone up a little bit and we just didn't, when we estimated back in March, we were under. And so this is to make sure that we're good by the end of the year.
This is just a rate increase. This is not adding a new service.
No, no, this is, this is the same service, same meters. We've had great success with them getting them into the residents' homes. This is just for that service for the rate increase.
That's the rate increase.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we need a motion to approve?
Okay, Councilmember Kurzwell?
Thank you. I move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendments.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurzwell, supported by Councilmember Dilg. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, motion passes. And new business number four this evening, 2023, 2024 budget meeting dates.
Each year the city council sets dates for our budget meetings to discuss the upcoming year's budget. This year we're proposing to hold our pre-budget meeting sometime within the first two weeks of March. At this meeting, we plan to discuss the road improvement plan and its funding. Our regular budget meeting where we will discuss the proposed 2324 budget is planned to be held during the first week of April. I've attached for you tonight a couple calendars for the month of March and April with X-out dates, potentially we could hold those meetings. And I asked you tonight to set a motion regarding specific dates. We propose to have those meetings at 6:00 PM and provide dinner for the councilmembers or others who we would be in, whoever would be in attendance. So the first one that would come up would be the pre-budget meeting. We have identified four dates of March, Wednesday, March 1st, Monday, March 6th, Tuesday, the 7th, or Wednesday, the 8th. Which date works best for everyone?
Well, those dates work equally well for everybody in the.
I can't do the 6th of March if we could avoid that.
I can't either, so.
It looks like the 7th and the 8th will work out for me as long, and I could probably make the 1st work too, it looks like. So yeah, I just, I really can't make the 6th.
I can do the 1st or the 8th.
Okay. Anyone got a preference on 1st or the 8th?
Nope.
1st. I kind of agree with that. Then we get a little bit of a longer window between.
We will have a meeting two days before that, on the Monday that week.
That's fine.
Yep, that's all right. So 6 o'clock works for everyone?
Yep.
And that is the 1st?
Oh, yep, sorry. Thanks.
We could keep it the first Wednesday of April, the 5th, I mean.
Yeah, I can't do the 6th. I can do, I can do the 1st.
Somebody said it's good?
I can do the 1st.
Yeah, that looks good to me, too.
Yeah, we could keep it the first Wednesday of the month, yeah.
Stick to the same time?
Yeah.
6 o'clock.
Okay.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve March 1st at 6:00 PM as the date to hold our City of South Lion pre-budget meeting. And April 5th at 6:00 PM as the, the date to hold our 2023, 2024 budget meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Mosier. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Campbell?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, motion passes. Does anyone have anything on the budget this evening? Okay. We'll open the floor for our second public comment this evening. Please remember to state your name and address and remember our two-minute time limit. Close the floor for public comment, and we'll move on to the managers' report with city managers all night.
Few items to bring up at upcoming city council meetings, we'll have them on the agenda, the police and fire department yearly reports. I believe I've received almost everyone's city council budget suggestions, but if you have not submitted them to me, please email me or drop them off at the office. The road bond sale took place on Wednesday, January 11th. And with Huntington Securities being selected, in this amount of the wire, the city will be close to $8.8 million for road improvements. The first scheduled or introductory meeting regarding the Haggadorn Air Road Improvement Meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, January 26th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. At this meeting, the public and those who are fronting where the improvements are going to be able to ask questions of the project and ask of our engineers or staff. The Oakland County Transit Millage, I was at Oakland County Managers Meeting this past week. At this meeting, County Executive Dave Coulter informed the group that those communities that use people expressed will be reimbursed by the county for their services and expenses for this coming year. We've not seen this in writing, nor have we been informed as how the reimbursement will take place, but we'll be meeting with county officials to ensure that our residents are receiving additional services from the collection of the Oakland County Transit Millage. As it relates to 150th anniversary, we're reviewing opportunities and means of which to be celebrating this for the upcoming year. I've met with the members of the Historical Society last week to discuss their plans. We're working on developing a logo that will take place and put on city letterhead, magnets on vehicles, events, potential for creating 150th Christmas ornaments. And if any of you have any suggestions, and some of you have provided those to me, please let me know how you think we can enhance this, this particular event. Last week, or two weeks ago, most of you may have heard about the proposed school cell tower. We received notice to the schools that they are planning to put a 155-foot cell tower with fenced-in ground equipment on the property located near the pathway on the high school property. Because this is a private company located in a commercial structure on the property, they must get site plan approval or potential use variance approval, including a public hearing. I'll advise you with more pertinent information as it becomes available. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Hanson?
I was curious if there was any updates in regards to the city's two electrical vehicle chargers, if we had heard back from DTE on.
I don't have anything. I'm not sure, Nate, if you have anything else?
Yeah, I've been meeting with a different company, actually, because the original company that I had gone with or was going to go with has been unresponsive to my requests. So looking elsewhere, I got a quote last week for the charging stations. Hopefully we can move forward with them. They've been more responsive to me than, than the other company had been, so.
Would it be possibly advantageous to maybe bundle the already-approved two charging stations into perhaps the new farmer's market idea and maybe incorporating maybe some of your input into creating a charging parking port versus, you know, along with a farmer's market, you know, roofed area, you know, that would maybe save the city some money and, and, you know, combine these two products?
So just so I'm clear on what you're asking, to put in more charging stations, is that what you're getting at or?
Well, no, instead, I mean, obviously these two charging stations are kind of on the back burner or held up. You know, maybe utilizing the ARPA money for the farmer's market physical structure along with the charging stations so that, you know, it's one project and then bundling them, so to speak, to save the city some money.
Yeah, I think if that's something we can.
I would advise that that would probably delay these being installed probably for over a year. Because trying to look at structures, look at permits, how we're going to be spending the money, what the design would be for that particular structure. You know, Nate has been working with that one particular company, but hasn't been able to, you know, unfortunately, they have not been able to follow through. And that's what started having them looking for, you know, other locations, so we can continue to move forward. And I don't know how quickly that's going to happen, but I think the structure is a great idea, but I think that's going to have to take, you know, some research, because we also looked at, and I think one of the councilmembers brought up also, is on, at that site, is not only to just input the structure, but also improve a parking lot, get the other equipment there on that site. So, I mean, it's up to you if you decide that you want to do that, but I just, I would caution that.
I figured I'd just, you know, pose that out loud from a standpoint that we've been, you know, talking about this for probably about a year now. And I know you're probably about as frustrated as everyone else, so, but appreciate your efforts all the same.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kennedy? So Nate, in view of the, the delay that you've encountered, does that impact the rebates from DTE on these chargers at all?
I've been in contact with them weekly about what's going on, so they're aware of what's happening, and they haven't said it's not going to impact the rebate, so.
They haven't confirmed it either, that we're still going to get them?
As far as I know, yeah, we're still getting them, so.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kurzwell? Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
I was just thinking that, I mean, these things have been.
I was just thinking that, I mean, these things have been slated to have two locations. By the time this ARPA money is freed up and something is going on in the new, new park, chances are, I mean, with the advent of expanding electrical cars, we're going to have a need for more anyway. So I think we stay, hang tight with what we've got now and then augment down the road when we've got some of that, that project is moving in the right direction.
Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you. I wanted to ask you, Paul, regarding this reimbursement that we're going to get for People's Express. Is the reason we're getting reimbursed is because they don't plan to put public transportation out here with the transit tax? I mean, those buses aren't coming out here, so is there a way, are, are they sort of patching together a public transportation and saying, okay, for you places like Lyon Township and South Lyon, you know, we're not coming out your way, but we will reimburse you for costs of public transportation that you do have? Is that what's going on?
Well, I don't think the county has a complete plan on what they want to do. That's been fairly evident based upon the conversations that I've been having with county officials, as well as municipal managers in the southwest part of the county. The other entities, NOTA, SMART, the OPC Rochester, there's, there's so, there's four or five different groups that are providing services that the county had already deemed that they were going to be partnering with to include in their transportation or their transit plan. People's Express was not originally part of that group. And then we started to meet, and we met with counties official, county officials online with county executive and deputy county executive, expressing our frustration that we are not part of this large plan. We've just turned into being a donor community for all the other communities to have these other services. And we said, at the minimum, this has to start out with this, our use, because all of us are satisfied with People's Express and probably seven different communities that we've been meeting with regularly now with the officials and, and on our own, that we need at least this, but now we want to expand that. We want to look at providing People's Express, will there be locations that people can go to People's Express, go to a particular location, and then partner with some of the, whether it's SMART, NOTA, whoever else may be, to go other areas throughout the county. So we're continuing to look at those opportunities, as well as enhancing our services with People's Express, because we realize that is not enough, because that's only based upon maybe one-fifth of what we're donating in this transit to Oakland County, provide services throughout the county, is what we're getting one-fifth back just for People's Express. So we all want more and we all think that all the residents of our communities are, it's important that we do get more.
Well, thank you for advancing that position, because that was exactly the point I was going to make, you know, is that it's kind of a win-win for the county right now, because they're going to get three-quarters of our tax dollars and, and we get, you know, if they reimburse us the money that we're spending, they're still coming out ahead with, with money for, for the next 10 years. And it really kind of doesn't make sense to run a complete bus system out here, because we don't have that kind of activity that, that goes on at 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. You know, this is kind of a bedroom community, so we sort of, you know, close up at a certain time, whereas when you go to certain areas in the county, you know, you drive up and down Telegraph, you know, that, that's a busy highway for, you know, up until 10, 11 o'clock at night. So I can see why they don't want to bring a, a fully developed bus system out this way, and I get that. But at the same time, they, they really do need to come to the table and address this community, because it's almost a half a million dollars that we are spending that's going to this, you know, transit, whatever it's going to turn out to be. And we are not going to be getting a half a million dollars worth of public transportation out of it.
In the communication that I've had with Wicksum Commerce, Wolverine Lake, Milford, Lyon Township, we all realize that ridership is going to increase based upon this SMART. We, regarding this, the SMART, the NOTA, every pla, everybody, place else within the county that residents will be able to participate in, based upon a specific cost, which is helping subsidize this large program. We are trying to figure out a means that how it can benefit our community, whether it's transportation of individuals to colleges, whether it's individuals to businesses, whether it's just individuals to doctors' offices or, or hospitals or whatever it may be. We know, because everybody's heard about this, that now this is going to expand. We just don't know to what extent, but we want to be prepared for it. And whether that's assisting People's Express, helping expand those services, or getting the other one, other entities that are close to us, providing drop-off or pickup points that are in South Lyon or in the South Lyon area that people can go to to get to all the other areas around Oakland County.
Well, thank you for your efforts and if I can be of any help, let me know.
Councilmember Dilg, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I was thrilled with the crosswalks. Was really happy to see those go in. And I, obviously, the one for the farmer's market, we won't really see until the spring, but it'll, I think that'll be a vast improvement. And the crosswalk that'll be operational when the Italian restaurant opens, I think that'll be really helpful, too. So I know I'm one of the bigger complainers about that, so I just wanted to acknowledge when you, when they're, when it was finally done. So thank you so much. That's all.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Just a quick one, is there any indication when 110's hole is going to end up being filled up?
We made contact with the builder two weeks ago and I believe last week. I'll contact the building department and find out, because they were supposed to be coming back out there to, to fill that in, to make sure it's a, you know, a safe, a safe location.
Yeah. I mean, I, it doesn't look like it's really treacherous, but nonetheless, why, why play with it?
All right. If no one else has anything for Paul, we're going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Kibble, why don't you kick us off tonight?
This is kind of softball, but the lights that are out in the, the parking lot right now, I'm, I'm assuming that they're going to be posts rather than these little, like three-feet-high spotlights? It, it just slays me, because to me, every time I drive home and I see those lights on, I feel like I'm approaching a penitentiary. They are just so glaringly bright. It's just scary. So I, I hope they find those poles pretty soon, because it's, yeah, it, it just really changes the, the character of this area.
The poles were shipped and the powder coat came in with deficiencies to it, so they were sent back, and now we're waiting for them to come back.
Hmm, okay. Well, that was my, the extent of my contribution.
Thanks, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Moser?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy?
Tonight, I just want to let every, everybody know that the Salem South Lyon District Library will be offering notary services on Thursday, on Tuesday evening, tomorrow. Brad Heiss from Comerica will be there from 7, actually 6:00 PM until 7:00 PM. So bring your documents and your photo ID and he'll take care of you. Also, for all you amateur crime scene investigators, you can join Michigan State Police Lieutenant Sarah Krebs, as she shares her knowledge of how a forensic artist works within the police department. In her tenure as in the MSP Missing Persons Unit, she and her unit have brought closure to hundreds of these once-thought-cold investigations. So make plans to attend the program on Thursday, February 9th, from 6:30 until 7:30. Registration's required, so go to the Salem South Lyon District Library website to reserve your seat. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, again, would like to thank our incredible law enforcement department. I had the pleasure of welcoming a new member into our community who was at their closing. And it's a young family, and they made it very clear why they chose South Lyon. And there was only one criteria. It was the safest city that they had looked at. So safety clearly is number one for people. You're in a community that respects law enforcement. We thank you for what you do. You got a tough job. I know I couldn't do it. It's unfortunate that we have what's going on out there, but you at least are in a community that loves you and respects you, and thank you so much. And God bless all your lives and your commitments. So thank you. Also, I want to thank a good friend, Abe, for stepping up on the DDA. I just learned about it. I can't think of a better individual to sit on the DDA with his experience in real estate. And, and I'll tell you what, what he has. I, I talked to him and sometimes I just got to go in and say, Abe, what do you think? The man just has the best common sense, and that's 99% of solving your problems. It's just doggone common sense. So I want to thank him for his friendship over the years, and I want to thank him for recommitting to the DDA. You're just going to be outstanding. And that also goes to David, too. David's going to do a, a great job. I know he's let, him and his wife have gone, but we're just so fortunate to have some new team members coming in that are just going to be incredible. Other than that, I just wanted to say goodnight and thank you for those that attended tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of events that are coming up in the community, especially for local businesses. This Thursday on January 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the South Lyon Hotel, the Huron Valley Chamber and the Lyon Chamber have teamed up for a networking event to get together with local businesses and do some networking and meet some folks in the biz, in the business community. And then next week, January 30th, we've got a Beer and Business Networking Event in New Hudson at Jonas Bar and Grill. The Brighton Area Chamber has teamed with other chambers in the area, Lyon Chamber being one of them, to do another networking event. It'll be great to meet some local business leaders. And that'll be running from 4:00 to 6:00 on January 30th. And finally, a great event that's coming up, I'm going to put it on everybody's calendar, April 23rd is the South Lyon Creek Cleanup. It has been confirmed. We've got several sponsors, and I'll have more details as far as the time. It'll probably be 9:00 AM start time, as per usual, but break out your waders and your gloves and don't take any pictures if I fall over into the creek. Finally, I wanted to give a shout out to the Painted Crock. This is a new business that took over the pottery painting studio about two or so months ago, but it is a new business. My daughter and I were able to paint some pottery. Don't listen, Mom. It might have been for you. But, so, shout out to the Painted Crock. It was a great experience for the little ones, a lot of smiling faces and folks that were enjoying it, all the way up until they closed their doors on Saturday. So shout out to the Painted Crock and thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I wanted to say was this was a wonderful meeting. It was so wonderful to see all of the information on the Shauermann's and all the history of South Lyon, the new members to our DDA board and to their South Lyon Housing Commission, our police and newcomers and, and promotions. It was just, it was a really, really great meeting, and I just want to say, it's, you know, makes you happy to be on the board when you get to sit in a day like today. So that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Dilg. I'll echo that. I agree. Lots of townie pride up here tonight with that. I, I do owe some people some thank yous. You know, oh, right before the holiday break, I sat down with some folks over at Administration and with Nate and Paul, and I reached out to the Historical Society. And one of the things I was really wanting to try and get off the launching pad this year, I had the idea a little bit last year, but I think we fine-tuned it a little bit, is honoring and recognizing folks in the community that, you know, have obviously just been a major contributor. Obviously, Shauermann's IGA, going back to, you know, the city's first major local grocery chain. Obviously, many of the family members made it out tonight. That was awesome. We're going to continue to build on that. It's, the game plan is to hopefully have the second meeting of each month. We'll, through this year, we will be recognizing either a family or a small business that's been involved in the community for a long period of time, to recognize them for what they deserve to be recognized for. So it was a really cool night to be here with, with all the officers in the house and, and all of that, and then our new board appointees. So it definitely, it, it's, I think that's the fullest the House has been here in quite some time. I mean, that was, that was standing room only, so that's, that's it. I'm just proud of the community. Let's keep it up. We've got a big budget season coming up, you know, and I'm looking forward to, to keeping on, keeping on with everyone. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you. Move to adjourn?
Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for everything.